...for each of our meetings with the flag seat, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just real quick, before we start with our student presentation, this is Director Concholson's final meeting. As a board member who's dedicated eight years of service to the Gilroy School District, and I know that a lot of her friends in camp here are here this evening, so just in case you wanted to share some thoughts about how wonderful Kim is, we would welcome you to do that. In order to have you do that, oh, I do need you to fill out a card, which you can find on the back table, and you can turn that into valvotham. So if you would like to share some thoughts when we get to that part of our agenda, please do fill out one of those cards as soon as you can, and we can make sure you get a chance to speak. Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to enjoy wonderful entertainment from Wichita Elementary 4th through 6th grade Ballet Hop Florico dancers, and Director Jackie Fras is going to introduce them to us.
Tonight, it is my... It's my pleasure to introduce students from Wichita Elementary School's Ballet Hop Florico, who are here to perform to the Board of Directors. Students who participate in Ballet Hop Florico, learn traditional Mexican hop dances, engage in appreciation of the music and colorful traditions. These 4th through 6th grade students, taught by Mary Carmen Gauna and facilitated by Brenda Boozman, have been practicing weekly since mid-February, and this will be their final performance of the year. Please welcome, please join me in welcoming these students as they perform for us tonight. Sorry, technical difficulties here, making it really quick. Apologize for this.
Thank you, everybody, for coming in and supporting our Wichita students here. They really took a lot of time and effort. They have a ton of energy to be able to learn all these steps, but I am super proud of them. They really do make Wichita a better place.
There you go, fabulous. All right, everybody, six more. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Wow, that was amazing and fantastic. Thank you so much. It is customary for families who come to watch the student performance to exit the meeting after their students are finished. So don't feel self-conscious if that is what you would like to do. You are under no obligation to stay for the rest of our meeting, and we do not do this personally. We know that you have other things to do. But you're also more than welcome to stay if you would like to, and it's kind of as entertaining for you as we can, but we cannot follow them with the entertainment factor, unfortunately. Okay, so I said that this is Concholson's last meeting earlier, but it is also the last meeting of our two student representatives, Jessica and Samantha, who have served so diligently this last year, and we're very happy that they're with us. If you would like to speak about either Jessica or Samantha, you're also welcome to fill out a comment card at the back table and turn it into valvotham there, and we can make sure that you get an opportunity to share your thoughts about these wonderful young women. So we are going to move on to item two on our agenda, E2, which is recognition and appreciation out of student representatives, Samantha, Bea, and Ferris, and Jessica, Jose, and Emerson.
All right, good evening, everybody. So for the past year, Jessica and Samantha have served as student representatives to the school, and they are the first people ever in Gilroy School District to serve in that capacity. So one of the things that we're wanting to do is get their name tag back, because we're not quite in the trophy case for the district, just because they really were the first people to do this for us. And over this past year, we've learned a lot about the role that they can play and in what capacity that would work. And throughout this year, we've been fortunate because they've shared their opinions with us from a student perspective. They've provided updates regarding what's happening at the school level and how the decisions that are made at the board level impact students. They've provided insight and perspective that we didn't have prior to this young joining. They've put in countless hours representing the district in a variety of different things, sharing their voice, whether that was going down to Salem for advocacy, whether it was to go to Salem for student funding, or whether it was hosting a group of people here to discuss business leaders we wanted to, wanted them to learn more about our career and college pathways, whether it was talking with other students and hearing the issues that were important to them. Again, they have represented the district in a variety of different ways. We've learned along the way with them, and we want to thank them for being the pioneers for this position and just thank them for all of their efforts. We do have a couple little items here for you, and I know there are a few board members that want to say a few things about you as well. From the district perspective. All right, we'll go with that, and then open it up for any board members if there's anything that you wanted to share as well.
We'll do Kim, and then Erica, and then Jackie.
It's super prouder that today, when we recognize your first year of service, that Rebecca and Solomon is here again. She was here when you were sworn in, and it was a long journey to have student representation. So thrilled that two of you were at first. We learned so much from you and your energy. I think my favorite times with both of you is actually in the car. Because that's really where the real conversation happens. And before you go, not only did I hear your perspective on school, but I'm so excited to see where you go in the future. You both have delivered a meaningful, impactful performance this year. And so I'm just super excited to see where you go. I can't just stand on it and hold it correct, okay?
Erica and Jackie.
Thank you, thank you, for serving on our board. We just got to ask for better first letters to do this project. And I also just want to say that I wish you the best in your future. You're also a good one, and you learn a lot. And we hope that this is just the beginning, and you'll come back. I can see other student board members and your resource for them. I know that can create a great impact.
Jackie and Mark.
I thought I had words to say. You're so thoughtful, and you guys say, and the perspective you bring from the student level, like Mont said, what our decisions and how our decisions affect the boots on the gown people. You guys have, I've learned so much from you, especially on our late my burger here, which is now, I think Jessica's favorite chicken hack is just sweet.
They were pretty good!
She'd never had them before, and I said, "Oh, no, we need to fix that." It's true, I know it's that, true.
I mean, that's Kim's head, the best memory I've ever taken.
Yeah, she's in the car, that's true. I'm going to miss your presence. I'll always give you a ride, so they really need a coffee. You guys are both so accomplished and determined, and I hope you're going to do great things in the future. Samantha, you found your voice this year. This last year, you truly found your voice. Jessica's never lost her words. Wonderful, wonderful. You're both awesome, and it's been my privilege to watch you grow.
Thank you.
Mark, you're here.
Yeah, Jessica never lost words, but usually the first words are, "I don't really like to talk that much." Thank you both for serving alongside of us in being our freshman class. I think we learned a lot having you guys on board, and sorry for the mistakes we made, and appreciate the feedback where we can do better. And you know, when it comes time for college applications, I'm pretty sure you can get the board to buy a sign somehow or other representation. Well, thank you guys both.
Thank you, thank you.
You're here, and you're here. It was great working with you two, like great examples of the students that we have in our district. Thank you for being brave and stepping into this role. Really, like, was the first time getting to know what you and yourself meant to you. But you guys did an excellent job, and I wish you both the best. And you really want to maintain, like, district relationships, so even though you're not on the board, please, both of you, reach out anytime. Mark.
So it was really a lot of fun to watch both of them grow, but I really want to speak to that. Somehow, having you both on the board sort of changed the dynamic for all of us, where it was okay for all of us to grow. And you just created that space for us all to ask questions and kind of not pretend like we knew it all, but just ask questions and kind of grow together. And that was a sort of a corporate dynamic that your addition to the board added that I certainly didn't see coming, but I certainly benefited from myself. And it's just really, as the only grandpa on the board, you somehow completed the whole spectrum of life experience here on the board, and that was, again, very welcome, certainly from my perspective. So Jessica shared with me she's thinking about all kinds of amazing things as a senior, but looking, like going maybe down to the Bay Area or joining the Wazoo Network. So those are exciting. And Samantha's thinking about pilots, or the Vikings, or even the boxers out of Forest Grove, and those are all great. Just the excitement of kind of sharing that phase of your life with us is just really exciting, you know, for all of us as board members to know that's coming next for you, and that is a small piece of that. So I really appreciate the joy and the curiosity and the confidence that you brought to this board, and that's a gift to all of us, and really a gift to the community. Thank you for your service.
I'm going to go to you, Marissa, too. So I wanted to also say just a couple of things. First, I think that next year, when you both are walking your respective graduations, there might be a little bit of a, our wrestling competition that I haven't seen until he gets to hand you his diploma.
Make sure you talk to him about it, will you?
I know, and probably just formal in mind for you guys. But I'm really looking forward to getting to share that moment with you. I didn't get to be your mentor at the review this year, because I was chairing everybody else about that opportunity, but I will get to if I do it this year, which I'm really looking forward to. I did get to spend a lot of time with both of you in conferences and driving things like that. And I just, I want to say that for me, it's particularly meaningful to have you here. For me, tonight, I started my second term on the board, and one of my first realistic moments as a board member was when I realized that it wasn't really as easy as I had assumed to get student representatives on the board. And that was an experience that I had with both Kim and Janine when she was on our school board. And I'm really glad that we were able to find me to happen. And you all have made me regret that matter at all. So I really appreciate your perspective and thought toward it, and I respect both of you very much. And I'm going to make sure that I get at least a corner of the diploma next.
You all just have one little thing to say.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the opportunity to honor Kim Stralton. And it's hard to put into words what Kim has meant to us over the last eight years, but I'm going to give that a try anyway. And I know there's some other people here that have submitted comments that also want to put it into words. So if you could pass Kim to the next, we'll go ahead and get started. So Kim has served in a variety of capacity sports as she has been on the board. She's been on the board for eight years. She was elected in 2011, and then again in 2015. She's served as the chair, the vice chair, and the chair for the bond committee in the bond effort that was successful. But beyond those titles, here's what I really appreciated about Kim. She is a tireless advocate for kids. When it comes to students that are underserved or students whose voice is not heard, Kim is going to be the first person in line to speak up and to make sure that their needs are being met and their views are being understood by everyone else. She's one of those people that she values a balanced and well-rounded education. She doesn't get hung up on one test score too much, but she values the entire picture and what education is all about. And she understands that when we provide a niche for kids, that kids are going to thrive within that niche. And if we can shrink an environment for our students, then they're going to, they're going to do well during their time with us. She is someone that has valued the arts and activities, CTE, and has spent a ton of hours in the drama department on both floors. Yeah, and Laura's still here. They have spent a lot of quality time together. And she's one of those people that understands that when we provide those pathways for students, it provides these connections in the brain and these relationships that really matter and make a difference for our kids. Her advocacy for kids has oftentimes taken her to Salem. She knows I5 really well. She is a political science major, so I think she's laying out part of her desire to use that major well, and that she certainly has. The number of dollars that she's advocated for in Salem and the opportunity for our students to have that opportunity, and so much of, so many of those efforts and what it attributes, much of the change that is turned around this formula to people like Kim and the difference that they've made over the years. She's one of those people that her advocacy has also translated to taking her door to door. She's been through a lot of doors in this community, and whether that is championing a $408 million bond, which she led and organized in a very deliberate effort and was highly successful. I like to say we have $408 million to thank Kim, which is another thing, because she really did head up that entire effort, keep us all on track. And it was all about helping our schools. One of the things that I really appreciate about Kim is that she is an unapologetic pastor. If there is something in the community, if there's someone in the community that could help our students, she's going to be the first person to ask them to do that. If there's somebody in Salem who can champion our college, she's going to be the first person to ask them for that. So we truly appreciate that. Her advocacy has also meant that she has made a lot of sacrifices. And I think the biggest of those sacrifices have come in time away from her family. I see Tim and Ollie here tonight. I think Lucas had a prior in the evening. But I know that they knew the most important thing to her. And we have spent, we have had a lot of one-on-one conversations. And when I see Kim get choked up, or if I see her eyes get busy, it's always talking about the family. And I know that the countless hours that she has spent with the community, with the district, have been hours away from you. So thank you for sharing, Kim, with us. We really appreciate that. During Kim's time on the board, she has served over 30,000 different students, which is remarkable. 30,000 different students have been impacted by the work that we have done. And I think that one of the most important ones is, Ollie has said during the audience, another one we do, is I think she would say those are probably the two most important things that we've served there. So thanks again for sharing. We do have a traditional gift that we give outgoing board members, and that is a school bell. And so we do have that gift for her, so we're giving a traditional gift to her. But we also wanted to give her something that was set by her time with us. And so I was talking to the facility guys, and I was telling them, you know, we need, Kim's going off the board. Even the facilities guys, they know who Kim is because she's been around a long time. She's been involved in so many different things. And so they found a chair for us. I'm just going to put this up here. So this chair is from, we believe it's from the 1916s from Farmington View. And this is a chair that we tried to get rid of at a public auction, but nobody bought it. So we thought, "Let's give it to Kim." We had a, we had a local artist who's actually in the back here, Gately Eater. She helped with the painting, she helped, she did the painting. And what we did is we gave her a list of words that we felt kind of encapsulated Kim's time here on the board. And then Gately turned those into a number of different concepts here. So I probably can't see from there, but on the back, you can see the capital is represented there. You can't see on the seat, there's a right brain for right brain issue. There's dollars here because of the $408 million in family wars. There's a yellow brick road that speaks to your time in drama as well as a pathway to better opportunities for our kids. There's connections and synapses and HSD representation. There's a graduation cap because of all the work that you've done to make sure that our underserved population of students graduate on time and ready to go. And there's also mentioned here to the career and college pathways, because we know that it's not just a college experience that you value, but it's making sure that regardless of the path our students choose, that they have opportunities at the end of their time with us. So we'd like to give this to you. And then I know there's some other people that would like to say a few words, but on behalf of the entire district, thank you for everything you've meant to all of us and to all of our students. And even though we will miss your wisdom and energy and talent, we know that that will be put to good use on your next adventure. So thank you.
So we'll have a little appearance here and then we'll invite some of the folks up who want to share some thoughts about Kim after that. And so we'll go in the order that I see here. So we'll start with the students. I don't know which one or both, but you push the button, and then let's do Jackie, you have one.
Okay, I just, I'm so sweet. I just wanted to say that thank you so much for being so kind and welcoming to me and Jessica when we first came to the board. And I honestly am going to miss you so much, and I'm sure that all of us will miss you too. And I just hope that everything goes well with your future plans.
I don't really know where to start, but I just want to say thank you for being so welcoming to us and helping us out this year. I know this was a scary ride for all of us on the board, having to, where students come up here. But I think my time working with you especially has really proven how close we grew. I'm never going to forget our trips down to Salem. Those are some of the best memories all of us have pulled with me. And I just want to say thank you for supporting me and never letting me fall behind.
Jackie, you have one.
Well, I was thinking about what to say, and so I just brainstormed and wrote some words down that mean a lot to me, that you are, that you embody everything. You are calm and thoughtful, always considerate. You're so powerful and strong. You're such a great advocate, and you always put all of our students, all of them, first, no matter what. That is what is always put most in your mind. You're kind. You're the kindest, one of the kindest people I know. I mean, it's just, it shows in your soul. And I think the thing that we will miss the most, at least I will miss the most, is the historical perspective you bring to this board. There were questions I had, I mean, you were my mentor when I started here. And you're going to continue to be my mentor, just FYI. You know, when I didn't know something, I could come to you and it's, "Well, this is why you do that." And you were able to explain, there's always a reason why we do things, and we don't know that. And so you just embody everything that it means to be a public servant. You absolutely do, an unpaid public servant. So thank you.
Mark, you have one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Kim, I had the pleasure of working with you on some political things way back when, on the 2006 campaign, and Stand for Children, and both your campaigns. And so I've had a pleasure of working with you for a long, long time on other things with Janine and others and the crowd. So OSBA came up with the idea of recognizing board members statewide. And the first campaign was last year, and this board nominated you, Kim. And I thought I would read our nomination, a super talented board member. A super talented board member from neighboring Beaverton School District ultimately got that, but Kim is still our board member here. And here's what we said. "A brilliant HSD director since 2011, Kim's two campaigns were nothing short of a clinic on how to engage with voters on key issues: funding, school-based health clinics, career technical education, graduation rates. Kim has emerged as a respected top leader in our community. Completing leadership organ in 2013 and joining OSBA's Legislative Policy Committee in 2016, Kim walks the walk, leading discussions in regional ESB and OSBA's Legislative Policy, OSBA meetings, engaging with our legislators to tackle state of effort reform, and traveling to DC to advocate with Congress on Ever Student Succeed Act, ESSA. Understanding the most pressing need for HSD was aging facilities and rapid growth, Kim co-chaired our 2017 $408 million bond capital bond campaign, which passed 2-1. An amazing yes from the community. Thank you." This is particularly significant since an earlier HSD measure was defeated. The difference? Kim's energy, organization, leadership, and brilliance. To watch Kim at a board session or board meeting is to get a primer on board work, prepped on the issues, ready with discerning questions, silent when it's been sent by others. Kim sets the example. Never losing sight of why we serve, you'll find Kim reading in a classroom or attending a screenplay. Kim is our board member of the year. Thank you, Kim. And I just want to thank the board for putting together a little collage that we all signed. And these are some pictures of the evening from the bond celebration.
Thank you. Do you want to share that?
So I just want to say that I appreciate so much having you on the board, especially with a lot of boarders and fit coming in really new. And it's a big learning curve to understand your work as a public servant and as a member of the school, what is in your purview, what you can do. I mean, you have always been an example for us and have always have just a great sense of advocacy. And it's an example that I'm so proud that you're able to stay on and give to us. And I know that you did that. You are always so thoughtful and making sure that we understood. Thanks, and we appreciate it so much. So I just want to tell you thank you very much. I know it's so good to see you. The legacy of the work that you've done on this board, that's the ultimate reward to be able to see it every day and every night. So thank you so much.
Take care of that family of the plan.
Martin, leave the floor.
For those of you who don't know, and I didn't know this when I was like to the board, when you build a school, you put a plaque on it, the people's names on the board who were on the board when the school was built. I had no idea that this was a thing, and so I was, after elected, walking to Century High School and saw it, I was like, oh. So we had decided to put the board, that passed the bond, right? Correct. So for thousands of students that haven't been born yet, you're there when we have those. So that's pretty cool. But yeah, what Jack said, like, so many times we've been in the gathering and been like, what are we supposed to do last year? Right? So he made a text from us out of nowhere. Like, what are we supposed to do about this? So we'll miss that sage experience and leadership that you provided, keeping us all on track and we tried to learn how this job works. And I guess you move into that role now.
That's what they say.
She's ready.
Thanks, Martin. Leave the floor.
So everyone knows what a microbe is, right? That's Kim. She's amazing. I remember having that thought, you know, after the first time I met her, like, she knows so much. So I am so happy to have gotten an opportunity to work beside you and learn from you, and you are definitely a board member of course. So hashtag. Just the downside of being the last is that you follow really good stuff. I love all that, I do. The good part is that I thought things I hadn't thought I'd learned from you. I wrote Kim like a seven-page card, so a lot of it's in that. But, so I have so many things to say. So a couple of years ago, when the four people who were joining the board, I was really excited about the new energy that's coming into the board, but I was also really, really distraught about losing my closest colleague on the board, who is Janine, so only at the time I have a bunch of other fantastic colleagues. So I consulted myself by saying, well, Kim's still here with me, and so she'll still be there, and I meet her, and then now she's not going to be, so I feel even more sad than I felt then if that's possible. But like everyone has said, I know that you're making your service on the board, but you're not necessarily in your position of support for us, which we all appreciate very much. Kim has taught me a lot of things. She and I co-hosted after the 2013 bond campaign, which was, Martin mentioned, which was not successful. So that's now over almost six years, which is crazy. But so I've learned how to run a bond campaign. I also learned a lot about how to run a school board campaign and how to be a school board member, and what kind of school board member I wanted to be was greatly influenced by the kind of school board member that you have been. And obviously, I'm still me, so I'm sorry, it's not quite, I don't live up to your example, but you've tempered me a great deal. But you've been a great, and one of great support for me. And I think one of the most important lessons that I've learned from Kim is how to believe in and fight for the long game when it comes to our students. This is not worth the upcoming awarding immediately. There's no incentive medication in this realm, but it is worth it when there are small successes. So thank you, Kim, for teaching me that lesson, for teaching me how to be a better board member and kind of be board chair. And apparently people are expecting me to fill your shoes in some way, which is not possible. So that's going to be fun to watch. We're gonna do very much.
Okay. We have several folks who have come to share some thoughts about Kim. So first we'll have Lori, and then Janine, and then there are going to be two other folks after that. So Lori, you can come on first. I will tell you and share your thoughts, and then Janine will be welcome after that. I will, like, before everyone.
Hello, my friend. It is my honor to talk about Kim Strelgen. And it's kind of a cool thing. I'm both a parent and a teacher in the district, and so I feel like Kim has served me and my family, as well as me and my Glencoe family and my fellow teachers in unique and important ways. And I couldn't let her walk out of there without telling her how much I appreciate her. So things about Kim, she is knowledgeable, holy cow. If there's something going on in a school, she knows. Why? Because she goes there. She finds out. She doesn't hear it from somebody. She walks through the door. She knows what's happening in classrooms, and she has spent hours and hours and hours walking into the classrooms to find out. I've been blown away by her dedication. She also then gave me free rides, which is a good thing. She holds teachers accountable. She expects the best from us, and she should, because at the end of the day, she's where all of us should be. She cares about kids first before us, invites her what's right for kids, and tells people what they're not doing, and tells people what they are doing that's good. And at the end of the day, we're all so much better because of your influence. She's tireless. She's a champion for things that maybe other people don't think about. Like, there's a lot of programs out there, and yes, mine's a lot of them, but so are so many other things. Arts, construction, things that catch kids who might fall through the cracks otherwise. She is incredible, like, kind of spotting things that we need to make sure every kid has a place to belong, and an absolute champion for those things. So she's kind of the ultimate combination. Dedicated, smart, a fantastic listener, caring, resilient when the chips are down, positive, professional. She's the kind of role model we all can dream of being, honestly. For her leadership and her service, she is an unsung parabens, finally getting her song singing. And I'm so proud to be able to tell you how much I appreciate you and you're Drama Mama for life. That's the way it goes.
Thank you, Lori. We'll have Janine next, and then Kim.
It is a real honor to be here tonight. I am so, so much in awe of you, lady. We've served on the board six years together. We shared leadership roles together. And your dedication to student success is immeasurable. You just kept laser-focused, and you have been such a solid beacon for student success in Hillsborough School District since you had your kids step foot in this school. Not when you stepped foot into this board position, this volunteer board position, but when your kids came to school, you were in, you were involved. So here in the district, you have been so incredible. You keep the A in STEAM. You know the importance of our arts, and I appreciate that. CTE, I really appreciate that you said, that you kept that focus on what keeps kids coming back to school and really addressing that whole child was incredibly important. So you are just a complete joy, contagious joy to watch at graduations. I love it. And I just want to say that at the district level, we are so fortunate to have your vision and your complete heart driven to community and building community. At the state level, you took that role at a bigger arena, and you fought for state, for school funding. Tire-stake, Measure 98 funding. You looked at OSBA-focused legislation, and you said, how can I help? How can I advocate? And mental health support for students. And I appreciate our phone calls on my drives as well. I'm gonna keep them going. And I want to say that I'm curious what's on the horizon, what's next chapter for Kim, but I'm sure that whatever it is, you're going to keep inspiring learning. And I'm thankful, so thankful, for your dedicated service, but I am mostly thankful to call you a friend. Thank you.
All right, we'll have Kim, and then Ali.
Really proud of your passion, your commitment to bettering the education, health, and lives. Of all cheers, all children need this. Not just the wealth, not just the privilege, privilege of the family they were born into, or how they came to grow, all children. You've done the right thing, right for children, and for each of the senior projects at the state. I'm proud of you. Looking forward to the next step.
It's very cranky.
So let me tell you a few things about Kim Strelgen. She is my mom, not my twin, no matter how much we may act alike or look alike. She is an avid volunteer. She is a mentor. She is a public servant. She's everything Betsy DeVos should be. She is the thing that makes good things happen. My mother started volunteering in preschool and has never had the heart to stop. I've never seen her ask for a dime for her work over the last 22 years of my life. And if having two kids wasn't enough, she decided to adopt an entire school district. And over the last eight years, I've seen her through meetings, conferences, trainings, retreats, budget cuts, increased class sizes, decreased class sizes, and new bonds. And one thing that Kim always does is make a change for the better. I feel myself constantly listening to her speak about her work in HSD and constantly wanting to just quit my job and be a public servant as well. And I'm not the only one who feels this way. Kim has also mentored countless students who've had this exact thought and have acted on it. And through all of the budget cuts, through all those rough meetings, through the class visits, through the art projects, through her hours and hours and hours of service, she always enters the room looking to make a positive difference. She is a role model to every student in this district, but especially to me. And I'm really proud to call you a board member. Congratulations. All of you.
Please, I'm just an apologize now, we're not gonna stay on schedule.
We did want to make a statement, but ultimately we're all in town.
I wrote down everything, so I wanted to say that's all right. Of course.
It's three pages long.
Okay. No, it's not. It's okay. It's okay. My family and friends, if anyone will just stand. Those of you who don't normally come to working, who came tonight, all of you. If you are in a family or a friend and you came tonight and you don't normally come here, this is my village. And as was mentioned tonight, it takes a village to run elections and to be a public servant. And it's kind of ironic that Lucas is not here tonight because Lucas's birthday falls on graduation week. And so in addition to regularly missing birthdays and anniversaries and my birthday, I have missed a lot of activities that my children are involved. And Lucas, tonight, is at a board meeting because he volunteers as a board, on the Board of Directors for Friends of Noise. I've taught him to be public servants. So you can sit with, this is my village, and that's how I get through all of this work. I want to thank my mentors and all my partners. So Ms. Janine, Janine and I met when my kids were in preschool, and we used to serve on a board together there, and we didn't always agree there either. She is just the greatest mentor and friend, and I just, this journey with you, like, would you have guessed when our kids were three and four that, like, we're great? It's unbelievable. And so I just feel so lucky that you paved the way on this board for the seven people who sit here today. So big hearts to you. To past board members, even though I didn't always agree with everybody who served on this board during my periods of service, I've learned from each and every one of them, and I think it's always important to not discount voices that are different than your own or experiences that are different than your own. Even though they're not here, I can think of my Washington County and my state board member friends who have made it along the way. The other way you really get through this work is with colleagues. And these folks, I can't talk about this is with outside of this room. And so your colleagues, my colleagues in Washington County, who have helped me through challenges, and we are outstanding boards for one another.
Even though they're not here, I do thank my Washington County and my state board member friends who have made along the way. The other way you really get through this work is with colleagues. And these folks, I can't talk about this is with outside of this room. And so your colleagues, my colleagues in Washington County, who have helped me through challenges and we are outstanding boards for one another. And I've been very privileged to work with another of them, both in the county and to state level. To my current board member friends, man, we've accomplished a lot in a very short period of time. Wish you were here eight years ago. Your energy and your enthusiasm is contagious. You refired me up in so many ways. And when there were times when I got discouraged about this being the sixth of eight seasons where we have done budget cuts, you really helped me stay focused. And the thing I am most proud about you as a group is your community engagement. Not every board member who has ever served on this board believes in walking into schools, attending parent club meetings, getting to know pack members, spending time with staff members, and you all do that. And I encourage you to keep doing it. It's the best part of the job. To the staff, not just cabinet who I have gotten to know so incredibly well, but to all of the staff who've always been welcoming me. I do like to visit a lot. And that at first scared people because I'm also a note tapper, so I don't forget. And I used to scare people because I'd walk in and take notes. But it was to jot down things like, wow, I saw this amazing science project, I want to share that with somebody else. But I stopped taking notes because I was freaking people out. Some of the biggest highlights for me, I don't know where to begin, but one, growing program, options for kids, dual language, the bilingual program all the way through, and our woo scumblers, creating options, growing helps for online academy and continuing to grow that, our career pathways to shuttle us so many things that we have dreamed about and talked about for a long time. It is so fun to see those things realized. Our equity work has probably been the thing that's impacted me the most as a human being and my family as human beings. And so she loves the good work. It's important that we all are lifelong learners in everything, not just academia. To me, student reps, students are the best part about this job. And I love that you all, not least at this table, but just the way that staff has included student voice in all of our decision making, not just at the board meeting, whether it's serving students, talking to students in focus groups, or just taking in our feedback. Once a student, especially a teenager, once they know you were born that way, they've got no problems telling you everything they think about everything. And I love that I could always pick up the phone and share those thoughts. Of course, extremely proud of the work we did on the bond. I'm so excited that that looks on so long the avenue. It was a long journey for me to get to the Hillsborough School Board, and it's hard for me to remember a time where I did not dedicate at least 20 hours a week to public service. Long before the school board, for years we sat in the audience as participants, as listeners, as people who were advocating. Many of my friends here tonight, we started advocating together, not only because class sizes were too large, but because kindergarten in this district went every other day. And we wanted to make a difference around kinderbaggin'. And so to have seen those changes and knew that we're doing the best for kids. I thought I was prepared for this job. I thought how stupid this job was before I got here. And it had been far more challenging and rewarding than I ever expected. It is really hard for me to imagine what life is going to look like without my daily dose of HSD. But I look forward to staying connected through the Red Skull Foundation, who I will be serving on board, and other volunteer opportunities. And I hope that you all still really do call me as a resource. I would be so sad if you did not. Thank you so much, family and friends, for coming tonight. It means a great deal. And your words were beyond belief, but kind of like I'm on a TV show right now and like the ball's going to drop. Thank you for everything.
Okay, if you came to support Kim, can we just do a team photo before you all speak out? Let me go.
Can I help you, Sharon?
Yeah.
As someone who came up to the ears doing auctions and selling art, this is just super fitting. Very targeted to sell.
I know.
Are we going in? Do what Rick says.
You got your back. You got no worries.
You know sideways?
All right. Yeah, sideways, I'm scared. This is Mike's camera, then we're going to do one with mine, one with two of the streams.
Oh, Jesse.
All right, S.A.
That's the one thing I don't get about you. Everything else. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bet you have no secrets.
My goodness.
Yeah, I know. Go ahead. Because days later, the slogan.
All right, everybody. So again, that's really hard to follow. But now we're going to hold our regular meeting. And we're going to make it through and hopefully there will be no more tears and we can do that. So I can see the agenda, so I'm going to keep your motion.
Okay, great. I'm sure that the first agenda is presented.
All right. It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica that we approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? All right. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica that we approve the agenda as printed. If you would like to approve the agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, the agenda is approved. Excellent. Okay, and we're going to do something a little odd if you're a regular board meeting contender because we have to hold a budget hearing. So we're going to recess and then be the budget board and then the regular board. And it's just a little weird that we have to do it. So, okay. So our board meeting is now recessed. The first item of business will be to conduct the budget hearing for the 2019-20 budget. This is the final public hearing prior to board adoption of the budget document, which the Budget Committee approves on May 9th. This is the time for public testimony. The board will have an opportunity for questions and comments during the action items portion of the agenda. Any patron who wishes to speak should complete an intent to speak form located on the back table and submit to the Board Secretary Dalatma. I have some intent to speak cards, but not for the budget. So if you're interested in speaking regarding the budget, please maybe like do this so that I know you're going to draw a card. Okay. All right. So the hearing is open. I'm waiting for public testimony. I do not see any public testimony. And I'm going to declare the budget hearing closed. So we will adjourn the budget hearing. We'll reconvene our board meeting. And now we're going to be having the audience time of our agenda for our normal board meeting. I do have several intent to speak cards, and I have a very awkward statement that I'm required to read out loud. It is important to follow these regulations that board has set forth. So do please try to pay attention as you have to draw a card. It says, "Public participation in board meetings is governed by the rules of EDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent to speak card available on the back table and provided to the board secretary. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time and beginning of the regular session. Speakers should state their name and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson person should be designated, sorry, let's start over. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group of a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker. Five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of the group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commissions involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members." Okay, thank you very much. So once you come up, you can say your name and then I will start your three minutes. And we're going to start with Andrew Goodwin and then after that, Bethany Hansen. Thank you.
Andrew Goodwin, going to high school. And I'll be sitting where Jessica and Samantha are next year, but I thought that this could not wait. I don't mean anything personal. I just feel that when I first interviewed for the position of senior rep, I told Andrea and Katie that I could not sugarcoat anything. And today I'd like to discuss the patterns biology curriculum that will be voted on later with that in mind. I've done some research on the curriculum and the concept appears to be presented at a slow pace, which is contrary to the fast-paced and making a constant highlight in U P Biology. While I get that there are significant differences between the high school level and college level biology course, upon doing the research within the curriculum that we start to use at Beaverton, I found that there were some very important aspects that were missing that were taught in U P Biology that would not be taught in patterns biology. It does not follow this model large-scale pedagogy that biology needs to be taught at, most biology classes taught from the microscopic level up to the macro species level, but this starts with biodiversity. And not only that, but it only covers ecosystem biodiversity, which means that it deals with genetic biodiversity, process biodiversity, and species biodiversity. And so you know macro molecules, which refers to as biomolecules, tries to teach a cell as a whole without publicly covering the molecules needed for cells to thrive and survive. Additionally, the curriculum appears to increase different learning and teaching styles, which may seem beneficial to students at first glance. However, learning cells are a pseudoscience. And a reliable source, which is here in August, told me that learning cells are for people who want the easy way out. There are some times where I need someone to verbally explain it to me. There are other times where I can get that information from a book. I think that's true for everybody. You have to get to know people to know what those strengths and weaknesses are. Whereas with learning cells, I don't have to get to know you as a student. I can just have to take a test or create this kind of activity in my lesson plan. That's just bad teaching. It's bad teaching. It's a bad teaching practice. This is indicative that we must be comfortable with being uncomfortable, even if it means choosing a more rigorous biology curriculum. I would like to follow up with those who would be in the main connections regarding their curriculum, Travis Ryan, for example. Not to point any divisions out, but people like that would be where I can get a solid amount of input regarding this. I normally wouldn't bash anybody per se, but I do urge the board either vote no implementation of patterns biology or identify a higher quality curricula to increase expectations of our students. Perhaps with the student audit so that students of all levels can review the material and then make an educated and informed decision on this.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, next we will have Bethany Hansen, followed by Lindsay Foster.
My name is Bethany Hansen. I'm speaking under guidance of the proposed sexual education curriculum. I know in our district, we have a lot of different opinions, but I actually believe we have a lot of commonalities, one of which is that we all want what's best for our children. And as parents, we want the state or where our children learn and win. That requires we receive adequate communication from the school board, the district, the principals, and the teachers. That also requires we're able to give adequate communication. Some of us have a religion that guides our views about what we think is okay to discuss with our children and when. If others are taking that conversation away from us, then we're not able to practice our religion freely. Secondly, a lot of this curriculum, as I understand it, comes from state level. That already restricts our ability to have a healthy and productive conversation about it in our district, our school district. This school district's decision to have a very short inadequate open house last week further undermined our community's chance to have that kind of healthy discussion. Maybe we can't help what we get from the state, but we can make sure all voices are heard in our community and foster a community of cooperation. We want to know where others are coming from and we want them to know where we are coming from also. Therefore, I would like to ask the board to give more time and opportunities for the public to feel and discuss the proposed curriculum and for all viewpoints to be considered. This includes more district-wide emails placed with the curriculum changes, as well as more open houses and even working groups. Thank you.
Next, we will have Lindsay Foster, followed by Suzanne Holden.
My name is Lindsay Foster. I would like to comment regarding the district's sexual education open house that we had last week on Tuesday the fourth. I appreciate that the meeting was an attempt to involve the parents and other community members in the formulation of the curriculum. But I believe that the end result was just feelings of mistrust and alienation between the two parties. The meeting was held in a tiny room in the smallest library in the district with very little advertising, zero allowance for public discussion. There was absolutely no Q and A whatsoever. The sexual education law states that parents, teachers, school administrators, local health department staff, other community representatives, and persons from the medical community who are knowledgeable of the latest scientific information and effective education strategies shall develop a plan of instruction required by this rule and in alignment with the Oregon Health Education Standards and Benchmarks cooperatively. And that's what I'm here lobbying for, is cooperation and involvement. From speaking with school administration, I know that fostering a sense of belonging and connectedness in school is crucial for putting all of the students on a path to success. I believe we can foster a sense of belonging and connectedness without teaching and celebrating morally divisive topics. So I fear that in the name of tolerance and acceptance, our district is becoming intolerant of those who would like to maintain the right as parents to teach their children what they believe they need to know, when they need to know it regarding sex education, gender expression, and all of these other sensitive topics. I believe that if our district is so fearful of discussing these issues out loud and involving parents who have diverse views, that they're just going to create an environment of division and hysteria, which is what I've been feeling lately among the community. So when I, as a parent, feel that my religion is being undermined by the district, my student is not represented. My student is not included. And my student is alienated. So even the district's own supplementary material selection code references considering community values, expectations, morality, and not supporting unethical subjects. So these kind of considerations, they're going to require input from said community, do they not? My request to the board is to make efforts to consider other points of view, to encourage the district not to hide from dissenting voices, and give us more topic-specific meetings, more opportunities to have productive discussions, and to decide how we can educate our children together. Thank you.
You're Lindsay Foster, right? Okay, I just want to make sure I was in the right spot. Okay, so next we'll have Suzanne Holden, followed by Erin Curtis.
Hello, this is Suzanne Holden. As a parent in this community, I have many questions and concerns regarding the new sex education curriculum or comprehensive sex education curriculum. I would like to state these concerns and questions. How can we ensure that teachers and other educators don't use the new sex ed curriculum to push a political or ideological agenda, especially in regards to gender? to push a political or ideological agenda, especially in regards to gender? I have looked at the curriculum and I'm concerned that some of the teaching materials and instructions are not based on science and are not medically accurate. I have been researching this issue and feel strongly based on evidence I've seen that several aspects of the curriculum are harmful to children. A video by the Heritage Foundation titled "The Inequality of the Equality Act: Concerns from the Left" on YouTube had a panel of experts talking about gender identity that has been very informative on this topic and supports my opinion that some of the teachings in the curriculum are harmful or could be harmful to children. And I would highly recommend viewing that.
Thank you. Um, parents know their children best. What one child is ready to learn might not be the same for another child. So my concern is that some material may not be age-appropriate, even though the curriculum states that it is. Therefore, how can you ensure parents' rights to opt out without retaliation of any kind? It's also not clear to me how these units will be taught. Will it be a single module or somebody gives an instruction over time? If it is the latter, parents whose values disagree with the instruction may have a difficult time. I'll take that. I appreciate that there are many views and different opinions on these topics and I respect them, but I also want every voice to be heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and, um, last we'll go into another, Erin Curtis.
I was wondering, I was in attendance, oh, it's a small audience. I was at the sexual wellness open house last week and as soon as I stepped through the doors, it was clear that we was going to be having great. I could not even put my body in the door. Um, the, the room itself was packed body to body and there was no more room to move around. There were people smelling up the hallway. I couldn't hear Travis's presentation try to pick up from the back, but there was nothing to be done. There's clearly a need to discuss, um, this proposed curriculum and there's a genuine interest and concern from several community members. I was disappointed that, um, the advertised elementary, middle, and high school teachers were either not there or were not able to speak perhaps in this part of the presentation, but I don't believe that they were there. Uh, there was only one set of hard copy materials. It was, there were just too many people who couldn't get around to read them. Also, the library closed one hour after the meeting started and we did not have adequate time to ask the faculty before our questions were answered. I do appreciate the effort, however, I am here to ask the board to do better, to have a second and a third and a fourth meeting if necessary to answer questions from parents. I'm afraid that, um, there was an inadvertence appearance, given that the board doesn't care about community discussion because there was no opportunity at this one meeting that was held, which I do believe was inadvertent, but it must be appeared. We have to have an opportunity to discuss this. When there are morally charged issues at hand, as we said, Kim, we need to, we need to discuss all perspectives and consider all perspectives. People, I feel, I believe feel threatened by, by, um, some of the conversations that are proposed to be in the classroom. There are lots of different opinions in our community and I think that talking about them will help settle people and will help people understand what is actually taking place in the classroom and also, um, that there is mutual respect and trust going both ways from the board, from our elected board, and from the parents in the community. There are lots of members in our community that don't believe that gender is fluid or that sexually explicit terms have a place in the classroom. Some do, some don't, but we need to have a clear understanding of what is taking place and what is proposed before there is a vote on these topics. Sexuality is just one facet of our human experience and I'm afraid that this curriculum is overemphasizing its exclusion of other vital information that our children need to have healthy bodies and brains. I would like to focus on the common hopes and fears that we have for our children to grow up and do good, even if we disagree about how that goes to be done. But I believe that we have a lot of growing to do as a community in having open conversation. Please plan another meeting, again, second and third, if needed.
Um, thank you very much. We appreciate everyone for giving the time out, um, to come and speak with us. Um, Travis, um, do you, um, can you share any feedback, both ways you're still here?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments and I'm taking notes. Do you have a microphone?
Oh.
I appreciate the comments and I appreciate the well-attended meeting the other day. It was too small of a venue for the number of folks that turned out. Um, we, so just, just to recap our process when we consider any curriculum, but in particular sexual, uh, health. As a, as a district, we talk through how do we comply with the law and standards? And I acknowledge that folks are naming the fact that it's coming from the state. Our curriculum is prescribed by state standards and we have to deliver those standards by law, or else we risk our funding and being sanctioned as a district. Um, we look to research-based best practices and so in the presentation, and I'm sorry if you couldn't hear it, we talked through the different organizations, the, um, Health Authority, the Department of Education, um, different folks that we engaged as experts through the process with the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. So, you know, since January, we've been through a learning process that has informed what our plan is taking shape like and what resources that we've been drawing on so that they're research-based and the best materials for our teachers to teach the curriculum. And then we add a lens of, uh, being culturally inclusive. A lot of the materials you saw were bilingual. They had representations of students so that students see themselves in the materials. Uh, and then we also have a trauma-responsive lens that we've added to our process, which means that some students and teachers have experienced trauma related to sexual health and that for them, these topics are going to be difficult. And so for parents, we've validated the right that parents have to be notified of when these lessons are going to be taking place. We've worked with our principals on queuing up next year, common communication tools and common times that these things will be delivered and that students and parents have the right to opt out and do alternate activities. And teachers are being told, and counselors as well, that if they find these topics to be challenging professionally to deliver, that they need to have that conversation with the principal as well. So I just want to acknowledge that lens as well. And then the fact that our families have diverse customs and beliefs and values is a reality. Um, we're the most diverse county in Oregon in terms of race. We have a huge diversity of folks who are affiliated with different religions and cultural backgrounds. And so to the extent possible, we're posting everything so that families can look at what we are teaching in the classroom for the grade level and they can make choices based on their family's values about whether they want their students to be able to participate in that or not. Um, it is impossible for us to tailor what we do to each family's customs. So we have 20,000 students, but we do have the responsibility to be transparent and to notify people adequately so that they can make those choices. So I want you to know that I hear that and that our team in the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee had extensive conversations about that already. Um, it will be possible for us to have more open houses. We have, um, a plan to deliver also, yeah, I talked about this at the open house. We're going to do a four-part series tentatively named Sexual Health 101 and it's going to be sort of a scope and sequence like we did with the CCAC where we bring in experts, including our own Kristen Blumberg, to take a deeper dive into what are these topics? And then, uh, demo some lessons so that families can understand what we teach and how we teach it in the classroom at different grade levels. So that'll be happening in the fall prior to the lessons being delivered next year. Um, we're going to engage with PTAs and PACs at the school level so that principals have information to share with their staff, their parents, so that everybody internal, teachers and counselors, and folks who, um, are families or community members have access to this information as well in the fall. So, um, you know, oh, one other thing I wanted to say about transparency. Every note card that we got from the open house has been scanned and sent to our board members as well as the posters where we facilitated sticky notes so that folks can give feedback on our communication tools and improve those so that in terms of where to access information and when those lessons are happening, we get feedback from parents prior to that happening and it being inadequate. So my point is that, um, while I understand that we do need to continuously engage with stakeholders and get different perspectives, um, our board is privy to all the information that we've gathered so far and will be updated in September with the report and initial reading. And then there'll be an opportunity for public comment beyond that. So if that helps kind of give an overview of like the values that are underlying our process and in the process so far, I hope that, um, you know, I'm always open to feedback on how to improve it, but I feel like we've had the support of our teachers, counselors, administrators, our Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, and now the first open house, which was well-attended.
Thanks Travis.
Thanks.
You mentioned some other informational opportunities. Is that, uh, can you share anything about the potential timeline? Is that the summer, back in school, is it back in session?
Back, back in school is in session.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so again, thank you all so much for coming and sharing your thoughts with the board. The board, um, does care deeply about, um, community input and things like curriculum, which is why we increased the size of our curriculum committee over the last couple of years and, um, your feedback is valuable and we all read those cards. Um, and, uh, I'm happy and we're all happy for you to have more opportunities for additional open houses. So thank you for sharing that feedback with us. Um, also in a couple of items, we're going to talk about vacancies on our curriculum committee. So in case you want to walk out of other curriculum, feel free to apply. We always need, um, dedicated folks on those committees. Okay, everybody, we're going to move right on with our agenda here. Um, we are behind schedule by about, um, almost 30 minutes and we're going to end on time out of respect to the rest of the institutions, eight years of service, and to get our student representatives out of here on time and our new student representatives out of here on time. So let's keep that in mind as we power through this. Item H1, announced budget committee vacancies. It looks like in our packet on case 30, we have positions five, six, and seven that would be vacant on the budget committee. Um, Michelle, do you have any, um, additional information you would like to share about that at this time?
Uh, applications to manage to person must be received by September 3rd.
September 3rd.
We will facilitate that through the district oversight.
Perfect, great, okay. So positions five, six, and seven on the budget committee are vacant and applications are due September 3rd. Excellent, thank you very much, Michelle. Um, item two, announced community curriculum advisory committee vacancies. Um, Travis has a lot of information in here. Um, yours is not, Michelle's style is very easy to pull from. I'm just going to say, I'm just going to say.
This is embarrassing.
I'm so sorry. I mean, she, it's, it's the math brain.
Let me summarize it quickly.
Yes, go.
The, um, we'll have eight openings, we believe, based on who's reapplied and we'll carry through. We'll have three student openings as well. Um, as the board knows, each year in the last few years, we've done a census of our team to try to get representation in a number of categories. And I just want to give you a little bit of data so that as you recruit community members, you know who we represent on the committee and where we could use some extra membership. So, um, we are pretty well geographically representative in terms of elementary school attendance area. We are balanced in terms of male and female representatives. We are, uh, balanced in terms of educational attainment. We have students, we have student, folks who've done CTE, some college associate's degree and bachelor's degree. We have a pretty good balance of folks in terms of being students, parents, grandparents, community connected to schools, and siblings of students in the district. And we have pretty good representation in terms of, uh, who can speak to the needs of underrepresented groups, being students living in poverty, English learners, students from migrant families, students with special needs, students experiencing homelessness, and students who have experienced trauma or mental illness in their lives. Where we need more balance is in terms of race diversity. We are all either white or Latinx. So, uh, the committee would like me to communicate to you that we could use more diversity in terms of race. Also, the, the committee values having representation from each high school. So we'll be pursuing recruits from each of our high schools. We'll have only one student carrying forward and he's from Central. So, um, please help us recruit. The, um, application is being updated and will be available soon on the website in Spanish and English, and if anybody needs another language, we can help them with that as well.
When do they need to be returned to you by?
I think they need to, ah.
I know it's a September board meeting, so should you just say September 3rd, like September 8th?
No, it says September 3rd.
Okay, September 3rd, perfect.
Thank you.
Excellent, all right, thank you very much Travis.
Yep.
Um, communications department update, Beth?
Give me a second. I have to train, I'm in shock here. Can we get a video? Don't have a video this year. Oh.
I know.
Well, that's funny, every year. We did talk about it.
That's true. That's true.
I know, actually, we were talking about doing maybe like a Breakfast Club thing. So, look for that next year. This year, and it's actually, it's probably a good thing because we're trying to make up some time, so I'm going to go a little fast. I thought that I would utilize my time to show you something that I'm not sure that all of you know that we have, which is a strategic communications plan. And this is something that we have been putting together every year for the last five years and it really was born out of the, um, strategic communications audit that was done in 2014 and a lot of professional feedback that, uh, I received at that time through focus groups and different things like that. And so at our department retreat that summer, we really talked a lot about what, you know, really kind of broke down what our core mission is as a communications team. What is it that we're trying to accomplish? Who are we trying to communicate with? What are we trying to support? Uh, you know, really what are we trying to get done? And so, you know, this was where the whole Proud of the HSD theme was also born. That came out of our very first strategic communications planning process. The, um, Proud of the HSD festival was an initiative of our first strategic communications plan. And so a lot of those things have really been a thread through the last five years of this plan. So, um, I won't take you through obviously the background of it, but really I wanted to kind of show you just where we kind of put our strategies and tactics. And, um, so our strategy, one, is all about delivering consistent, relevant, timely communications to various stakeholder groups. And, um, as a, an interesting highlight under this area because that really speaks to what we do on our website and social media and things like that. So I wanted to read out some metrics to you because I think it's really interesting. So this school year, we have had over 1 million total page views on all of our websites with 500,000 unique visitors and that's up 11% year-over-year, which is great. Uh, mobile usage is up 20% year-over-year. So we've got a lot more of our users accessing our site on mobile and our current website is definitely optimized for mobile and tablet viewing, which is great. Um, we have nearly 7,200 followers on Facebook, up 30%. Um, actually, sorry, that's up 36% uh, year-over-year. 82% of our, of our folks who are followers for us are women. 17% are men, so we need a little bit more gender diversity in our Facebook followers. So, men, please follow us. Um, we've got, uh, just over 4,300 followers on Twitter and, uh, 250,000 impressions on YouTube. So, and, um, Facebook videos, we've been posting more and more Facebook videos. So, um, 16,000 minutes of Facebook videos that we posted have been viewed this year. So that's just some kind of interesting, uh, data points for you. But, uh, in addition, whoa, whoa, I really sped through that. So you'll see other things in here like, um, keeping alive the Proud of the HSD theme and our work behind the festival and really kind of getting Proud of the HSD ingrained in everyone's brains. And I, I think we've actually done a pretty good job. We hear people say it, there's people hashtagging it. Uh, people are putting our, our window plings in their cars and on the windows of their offices. So, so that's fabulous. Um, another thing that we had on our, on our plan for this year that didn't work out quite like we planned it, but it was still a great result is we really wanted to try to get, uh, one or more interns in our office with the goal of standing up an Instagram presence that would be more focused at communicating with students because as we analyzed all the various ways that we communicate, we felt like we do the worst job of communicating with the very people that we're here to serve. Um, and granted, it is a little bit difficult to capture the attention of young people when they're really probably much more interested and connected at their school in particular. However, I do believe there are ways that we could, um, provide useful content that actually students would consume, whether that be various engagement opportunities, scholarships, you know, grants, events, um, just even... you know, grants, events, just even putting up their pictures that they take and submit, contests, different things like that. So it wasn't for lack of trying, we did try to get some interns that were interested in that. We have actually had four interns this year. And two of them were really interested in learning about websites and website management, content management. And so Justin actually hosted them for each of them for a 30-hour internship. And they did a great job working on the Hill High website. They tackled the counseling website, so that was great. And then Jane, who is our marketing person for the bond, now she kind of jumped over the other side, but she has had two interns this year, McKenna and Mia. And they've been working on various aspects of event planning, bond marketing, and promotion regarding our various bond activities. So that has been really great to have the students on board with us. And so we do also focus on wanting to engage voices in our community and really reaching out to our families who don't speak English, primarily for us, that is our Spanish-speaking population, they do represent our largest population. But also, you know, how do we reach out to communities that speak languages other than English and Spanish? Our next most frequently spoken language in our community anyway is Vietnamese. And I know that Oka would like to hire a Vietnamese translator as soon as our funding situation is a little bit stronger. So anyway, I don't want to go on and on. I did want to leave a little bit of time for questions, but I just thought, in case you haven't seen it, that section of our website, which is the communications department section, we have a lot of information. There are all of our past, you know, hot news issues, a look inside, the strategic communications plan, which is something I thought that I would like to highlight for you before I go back to providing you with very interesting and engaging videos that showcase our department members, so.
Thank you very much. We'll do, I'm Erica and Martin.
I just wanted to thank you so much for being so flexible this year. I know we tried and we added so much to your plate and just wanted to figure out what is the best way to reach our community, like which way do they receive information? And trying to mimic that in the way that we put it out there. And I just thank you very much for being flexible and innovative and finding great examples for that. I was wondering if you have numbers for our district newsletter? Because I know that's something that has been revamped and we, you know, changed up. And I just wanted to see what that we checked in the FMA.
Yes. And I did not pull current metrics from Constant Contact, but since we switched over to that format, it does allow us to track. We send out, so we do, for those of you in the audience who may not know, we do kind of a parent slash community version that's in English. We do that same version in Spanish that's specifically sent to families who have self-identified as Spanish-speaking households. And then we have a staff version. So we send out hot news to about just shy of 18,000 people every week. That's how many email addresses our newsletters go out to. And our open rates, it varies by, when you break down those three types of issues, how many people open them. But I would say we get about half of the people opening them, which is pretty good, but it could be better. And, you know, we just keep trying to make sure that our content is relevant and interesting and engaging for folks and that it's something that they want to open and read. So, but I can certainly provide you with updated metrics, maybe in the sixth board update, so.
Martin, you want?
Yeah, Beth, I just wanted to compliment you. I think you're, you and your team are gold standard, really just outstanding products. And I wanted to compliment you. You've had a unified effect on us as board members, including the advocacy work we were trying to do and continuing to try to do with the products that you put out there. But allow us to go as individual members and have a common message that we all had endorsed. And that was really powerful, sort of behind the scenes to unify us and empower us. And I'm grateful. And I also wanted to say, also, you mentioned Jane. It's really remarkable how your, your district communications and the bond communications, that's really, they're still synced up. And that's, in other organizations, an impossible task and it, and you just can't look easy here. The work that Jane's doing to engage with the community is so compatible with the work that you're doing. North Plains, Proud of the HSD, where the bond messaging was out there, continuing to engage, update, thank, inform the community on that, the huge investment they're making. It's powerful. And I think you're kind of choreographing, choreographing all that and you need to do it bravely. And thank you very much.
Mark, can you just?
Right, choreographing it and we don't even realize your answers. So it's like very subtle in the way we're all making sure we're all in point, all in the same message. And yeah, again, thank you to everything you do, department, too. The advocacy work was, I think, probably difficult and you guys made it look effortless. And more than one event, we were the envy of the folks in the room, like, well, we don't have, we don't have a department like that. So, you know, there's 197 school districts in Oregon, I would say 190 were jealous of the work you're doing. So thank you.
I just want to especially thank you and Jane, who I know is in here right now, for working so closely with Century. The JAKTV crew at Century recently worked with Jane about the new security at Century. And she was just so flexible and so eager to help us. And I just want to thank you and her for that, just because it meant a lot to us as a Century community, but also as a whole HSC community as a whole. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Beth, we appreciate it very much. Okay, we'll run along to item number four, financial report with Michelle. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle about the information she put in the packet?
It's just super hard to follow that.
I know. Jackie has a question.
I have a lot of them. It's not a question, I know it is a question. It's not a question as much as a comment about the re-signing the recoup program.
Yes.
Good job. And, and I want to specifically call Jennifer Zabatsky.
Yes.
I think that that's really going to improve purchasing controls. And I think that that's a great, great idea and great thought and good policy. So thank you for that. Thank you, not everyone is excited about it. Well, I know. Yeah, I get that, but I, you know, yeah, I think that's great. Also, you do the workers' compensation report in here and student incident reports?
Mm-hmm.
At one point, and I asked Mike about this this morning, so he might shoot that or set me. We had asked for room clear data.
That's actually, Travis and I already talked about that. We'll gather that from people.
All right, very much, perfect.
Yeah, the answer is that we don't currently have it.
Okay, yeah. Are we going to get a private way to get that?
We can, we can gather the.
I don't want to make extra, a ton of extra work, I just think that.
Right, so we'll gather, we won't do a special request or anything, we'll gather the data that we currently keep and report that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions, Michelle, somebody else should like to share? Thank you for being so thorough and organized with your information, we appreciate it. Okay, we are at item I, information, AR updates. So GBN, we had the question upstairs from Samantha. Maybe, or can you guys give us some information on that in the update this week?
Yes, Cona and I are going to meet with Val tomorrow and give a little clarity on that.
Perfect, great. Are there any other questions or comments for Cona about GBN, GBA AR? Okay, we also have IIAR, instructional materials. Travis, any questions for him about that AR update? Okay, and also IIAR 2, any questions or comments for Travis about that? Is there anything that you want to share with us about that, Travis or Cona?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, guys. Okay, we are moving right along to our consent agenda, item J. So I'm ready to hear a motion about the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Yedira to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion, Mark and then Martin?
Seems like an oddly large number of meeting, minute approvals. Is that unusual, to do so many I ones?
We ended up with extra meetings in April and extra meetings in May. And I was not able to get the April meetings into the May packet, or I don't know what I would have done.
Okay.
One of our challenges has been with the number of policies that we're currently reviewing. That takes up a lot of that time, so.
Okay.
That's why every now and then we're going to see one minute of the meeting, but I don't look at it.
Martin?
Val, my question's for you, and I apologize for not getting it to you before this. When we discussed Mike's contract, there was a pretty rich discussion about why we were doing what we were doing this particular year with respect to Mike's point in his career and the market reality we were trying to react to. That didn't quite push through into the contract itself and the minutes as they're written didn't capture that. Is there a way that we could go back and maybe somehow maybe take a little more detailed notes of that conversation? Because it was pretty rich, it was about a five-minute exchange with our counsel and Jackie and a few of us, really kind of fleshed out sort of the, the meat of that, sort of teed up why we're doing what we're doing. And I'd like to capture that a little bit more visually. And I would actually be satisfied if we were just my notes, but maybe it belongs more robustly in the minutes of the meeting?
I could take a look at that. Technically, minutes are just action items, but there are definitely times where there's a hurry enough to have a detail where we go ahead and do that. So if that's a request at the door of Mike, I can go ahead and take a look at that.
So if, if we want to do that, then that would be make a motion to remove that set of minutes or?
You would, you would, you would make a motion to, you would that set of minutes.
I apologize, I don't actually remember which meeting it was.
I'm just going to ask what page it was on.
I think it was the 14th, May 14th. Um, I would, you know, just look it up, I'm trying to recall, I think that was the meeting that had Brian.
Page 54.
And if they have that.
I can look here. It's on page 55, 56.
Is it the May 14th?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess it would be a question where the, what people are going to be looking.
So, so in order to elaborate on this answer, do you need to remove it from the consent agenda, which means that I would need a motion to item six from the consent agenda?
I move that I will remove item six from the consent agenda. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark to remove the minutes from May 14th, 2019, item six, from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, I see some buttons, but I don't know if it's about this or that. But Jackie's shaking her head, so go ahead, Jackie.
I'm actually okay with the minutes as written. Like Val said, the, can you explain what, what is supposed to be, what's required to be included in the minutes and what, what the recommendation is? Can you clarify that for us?
The recommendation is that it records action taken afterward.
Okay, so then in that case, I'm okay with the minutes as written.
And if there's about where someone disagrees and they kind of have to, we have to record who's voting in which direction, but it's not a, it's not usually, like I say, there are some nations where we do include discussion, because that's what the board does if it's a matter that we think is really important to the community. So, but basically, we eliminate that of the action items.
Okay, then I'm, I'm okay with the way that it's written.
Any other discussion? Keep any more to come next, or?
Yep. Also, I just wondered, I don't feel strongly about changing it. I think we had a long history of trying to capture every word and it's just not a proficient way to do it. And also, I was satisfied with the letter and felt like it addressed some of the issues from that conversation that I recall. So for me, that's sufficient. I don't think that community members actually surgeon those meetings to find context for my contract honestly, if I should know. And if you open one action item for lots of, for capturing the conversation, then I'm afraid it will be at this meeting every meeting, one which, which meeting units require that, Michelle.
The other thing that, that kind of helps is having any recordings.
Every point, that's what I was going to say.
Martin, did you want to see the minutes?
Yeah, I guess so. Val, I'd be satisfied if I just, if you could help me find the voice recording for that snippet, I'll just make my own notes. It's, I completely agree with the actions we're taking. It's just that there was a lot that we changed in the contract. I think there was about four specific ways we changed it. And I just wanted to remind myself, three years hence, why specifically we had the diagonal movement here and the up movement there. And, you know, because if you go back in time, these pieces of the contract hadn't changed, but in this particular contract, they did change. And I just wanted to be clear in my own mind's eye for future reference as to why we had all those moving parts set in. And I agree, the discussion was complete and there's no controversy. I just don't want to forget what we told ourselves.
So I'm hearing you say that if you couldn't access the audio recording, that you maybe don't need the minutes to be elaborated. If that is the case, do you want to draw a motion?
Well, I would align the judgment of the board. I, three years hence, it would be nicer if it were minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
That we all shared rather than Mark ran his personal notes.
Okay, so it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark that we remove item six, approve minutes of May 14th, 2019, from the consent agenda. If you would like to remove item six, the minutes from May 14th from the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not like to remove them, please say no.
No, no.
Point of order, Matt, share? Isn't it, if one person wants to remove from the consent agenda, it's removed from the consent?
Well, you can remove it, but you can't edit it. And you wanted it to be removed to edit it. You can remove it, maybe it's own separate action item, but it still wouldn't be edited.
But I think he's saying all these are removed and whether we edit it or not, it's something we address at the update. Right?
Okay.
Is that right, Val? To remove it's something from the consent agenda, you just need to request it be?
Technically, that's the case. In this case, we was requesting it be removed in order to amend it. And we do need to have board approval to amend it, but that's fine, we can have it be its own separate action items and then it, so then item six can be removed. And then Val, do we need to vote separately on if we want to amend the minutes later? Or?
Well, I guess that wouldn't mean then we'll be action items. If you've taken it off of the consent agenda, so when we get to action items, we'll have to add. I do need to know who voted with which direction, because I didn't catch all that.
It was Martin and I think Yedira.
Doesn't the vote matter anymore? Which is?
Yeah, for, oh, yes, because I actually voted out. I've said.
Because the point of order should nullify the vote, doesn't it? The point of, the, the vote was whether or not to remove the action item, remove it from the consent agenda. And that's not a vote that we should even be taking, for some requests to be removed, which is removed.
Okay.
So I think there is, I think the vote's nullified, isn't it?
But don't we always vote to remove it from the consent agenda?
No, he's right, one person can remove it. But because you're talking about changing it, then you'll vote the image.
Okay, so right now, we have, we had a vote to approve the consent agenda. We have Mark removing item six. And we had Mark second that, that we would. So then we're going to vote on, so we're going to vote on the amended consent agenda.
Okay, and then when we get to the action items, do we vote just to approve the minutes or do we vote to amend those minutes and then approve?
Someone will have to make a motion.
Okay, to amend them.
It's, it's been written, so if someone wants you to make a motion to amend the motion, it would be whatever, whatever you guys decide to do.
Okay, got it. All right, great. So I then need an amended motion, I think, to approve the consent agenda as amended? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a new motion.
I will, I will go approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, okay, it's been moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira that we approve the consent agenda as amended. If you would like to approve the consent agenda as amended, which Erica moved and Yedira seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. So now we will go to action items and we'll do, remove item six first, just to get that out of the way, so we can stop being confused. So, item six, approved minutes of May 14th, 2019, was removed from the consent agenda. It's now its own action item. So I need either a motion to approve those minutes or to amend those minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as written. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2019, as written. Is there any discussion, Martin?
I'm honestly not quite sure how to see. I, I would like clarity in the minutes as to the discussion, what we have. So that more can remember on the record why, why we have the moving parts. And it's my personal opinion, it hasn't quite come through in the contract as it's written, or the minutes as they're written. So I think if we don't put it down and write, we will be, we'll lose the complete understanding that we're going to read. So I would move that we amend it to, just to go back and capture. So I would move that we amend it to, just to go back and capture very narrowly those specific. They might have been listed as a whereas, you know, series three, four, five, whereas's. But they were just contained in the rich discussion that we had as a board.
Mark?
The audio recordings remain in the archives or are in the archives, right?
I don't believe we've gotten rid of any yet since we've begun, but I don't know if the board has policy power to want to keep those. Since we have minutes, they can have the same retention that the minutes have. But I don't know if we've got a discussion on how long we can bring them.
Okay. But so far, for as long as we've done recordings, we have?
Yes.
Okay.
They're not all posted on the website, but they are still.
All right. So currently I have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2019 as written. That was moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim. If you would like to approve those minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no.
No.
So was that Mark and Martin? Was anybody else a no? Okay. So then the motion to approve them is written three years. Okay. So we are now at action item one, the original action item to adopt the resolution to adopt the 2019-2020. That's after the consent agenda on page 91. I'm ready to hear that motion and then we can have discussion.
I move that the board of directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 2019-2020 budget, appropriate the 2019-2020 budget and impose the 2019-2020 taxes and categorize the levy as shown in the June 11, 2019 board meeting packet.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie to adopt resolutions to adopt the 2019-20 budget. Is there any discussion or questions for Michelle? I do not see any. Is there anything you'd like to, yes, go.
Just chat out Jeff. There's been a meeting to gather your input and questions. We put a lot of hours into this document as well.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. It has been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that the board of directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 2019-20 budget, appropriate the 2019-20 budget and impose 2019-20 taxes and categorize the levy as shown in the June 11, 2019 board meeting packet. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item two, adjust appropriations with Michelle. That is after the?
185.
Oh, honestly, wacko molly. Give me just a second.
Are you ready for a motion?
Not yet. Give me just a second. Okay.
Just sit next.
All right. I am ready now to hear a motion.
Yeah.
I think if I hold on, I can make that close. I'm going to make that close.
I almost made a joke about how eight years and then?
I move that the board of directors approve the adjusted appropriations for general and special revenue funds listed in the June 11, 2019 board meeting packet.
Second. Give Mark that one. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Mark to approve the adjusted appropriations. Are there any questions or discussion? Perfect. Okay. All right. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Mark that the board of directors approve the adjusted appropriations for general and special revenue funds listed in the June 11, 2019 board meeting packet. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, Michelle. We are item number three, review the superintendent's performance and approve the evaluation. So do I read the letter first or after, Val?
I would get a motion if I had the letter.
Okay. So why don't I, yeah, so good. Okay. So I'm ready for a motion.
I move that the board of directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of the Hillsborough School District and direct that the evaluation letter be placed in his personnel file. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica. Before we vote, I will read the letter. But is there any discussion? Kim?
I can wait till after if you'd like me to.
Would I read them?
We're running short on time. I was so precise. I love this man. He's the best superintendent in the state.
Carried.
Did a great.
All right. So we evaluate the performance of the superintendent on an annual basis. And the board of directors writes a letter that summarizes that evaluation. And every year, the board chair reads that letter in a very awkward couple of minutes. This is my last time doing that, so this is going to be great. Dear Superintendent Scott, the Hillsborough School District, HSD, board of directors has completed your evaluation for 2018-19 according to policy CBG, evaluation of the superintendent. This year, it's standards-based modeling included a pre-evaluation survey completed by individual board members, your self-evaluation that examines your leadership and operational performance, and a thorough board discussion guided by a independent consultant. Thank you for your exceptional service to the HSD community in this year's 10th year as superintendent. You are evaluated on eight standards for superintendent performance. One, leadership and culture. Two, policy and governance. Three, communication and community relations. Four, organizational management. Five, facilities and technology management and planning. Six, instructional leadership. Seven, human resources management. And eight, values and ethics of leadership. The board used a four-point scoring system with exceeding proficiency developing and does not meet its descriptors. Superintendent Scott, the board of directors values your commitment to our community and district and your leadership toward our continuous improvement. Again, this year, the data from your evaluation showed exemplary overall performance. In all eight standards, the average rating from the board was between proficient and exceeding. We are proud to have you as our superintendent. For standard one, leadership of district culture, the board found much evidence to support outstanding performance on your part, including your commitment to hearing from our diverse community. We are excited about the growth of the pack and the continuation of Spanish poverty checks that make you accessible to more of our families. This year, the board particularly appreciated your support and leadership with our legislative and advocacy work, and this, of course, extends to your cabinet. As such, we gave you an extremely high performance rating for standard two, policy and governance. The board was pleased with your work in the area of standard three, communications and community relations. We see the video series as a great way for you to reach stakeholders who can't make it to other events but are interested in what's happening. In standard four, organizational management, the board shares your excitement around analyzing academic return on investment and your vision for achieving our quality equity goals to reach 100% graduation. The board used the efficient use of bond dollars as the primary driver behind our view of your performance for standard five, facilities and technology management and planning. We are pleased with the rollout so far and looking forward to the significant progress in the year to come. For standard six, instructional leadership, the board was particularly proud of your successful implementation of trauma-informed care in many of our schools, as well as the decrease in the opportunity gap for our students of color. The board is looking forward to seeing the strides that the Western Oregon University Scholars Program makes in years to come and continues to be impressed by your performance in standard seven, human resources management. Standard eight, values and ethics of leadership is the final standard and, as in years past, continues to be your highest-rated area of performance. The board unanimously agrees that your performance in this area is stellar and you are the epitome of leading by example. Superintendent Scott, the board continues to be honored to work with you toward our shared vision of providing world-class, outstanding public education to every student in our district, which prepares them for whatever path we choose to take in life. Your dedication to your role as superintendent is evident, and we appreciate your hard work in each of the eight of our standards. Moving forward into next year, the board has some suggested areas of focus. We are thrilled with the increase in diversity among HSD staff and urge you to continue pushing so that specifically our teachers and administrators are more representative of our students and community. The board is pleased with the strides being made in HSD to provide a more culturally responsive pedagogy, and we want to continue to see evidence of the opportunity gap closing and discrepant discipline rates between our students of color and white students become level. We know this is a tall order, and we also have full confidence that you are the person who will lead HSD to become the best in the state in these areas. We appreciate your tireless efforts on behalf of our students and your incredible length of service as superintendent of HSD. We know you are the best superintendent in the state and it is our great privilege to work closely with you every day. Thank you for all that you do that makes us all proud to be HSD. Sincerely, Lisa Allen, Board Chair, Erica Lopez, Vice Chair, Martin Graham, Yedira Martinez, Jackie Strass, Kim Stojcak, Mark Watson. All right. Thank you, Superintendent Scott. So it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica that the board of directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of Hillsborough School District and direct that the evaluation letter be placed in his personnel file. If you would like to approve that motion, as Kim moved and Erica seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. And that motion passes. Okay. We are now at item four, approve extension of superintendent's contract. I'm ready to hear a motion.
I move that the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors approves the individual contract with the superintendent effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Seven.
All right. It has been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that we approve the extension of the contract. Is there any discussion or questions? All right. It has been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors approves the individual contract with the superintendent effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. If you would like to approve that extension, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right. That brings us to item five, approve science instructional materials adoption. Travis, we heard from you and your awesome team last month. Is there any additional information you wish to share at this time or are we ready to move forward with a motion?
You know, I wanted to, I haven't had any comments or concerns about the proposal in the interim until Andrew spoke tonight, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate your feedback. And I can, it's the first I've heard of some of the points that you made, but I'd be happy to connect you with one of our science experts. I appreciate that you recognized my name, but I am the non-science expert who helps facilitate the process with our teachers and with our community curriculum advisory committee. So I'd be happy to, you know, talk about learning styles and like the next-generation science standards and molecular to bigger organisms type of instructional spoken sequence. But I think my colleague Andy would be the appropriate person to really sit down and talk to you about that. And maybe you can communicate your concerns and get some answers from him regarding that. So I appreciated that, and I made some notes about the topic. So we'll connect. So, yeah, just with, I appreciate the board considering the plan and would ask to, for approval tonight.
Wonderful. So I'm ready to hear a motion.
I move that the board of directors approve the proposed adoption of chemistry and biology materials.
Second. It's been moved by Martin and seconded by Yedira that we approve the adoption of the materials. Time for discussion. Martin and Jackie.
What's wrong?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that, I'm interested in what Andrew has to say in to bring up a question about the pace of this and the small-to-large kind of thing that you've been talking about.
Jackie, I can't comment on the pace.
No.
We do have the, at the junior year, there's a chance to either take biology or AP bio. And so I don't know if that was, in the comment that Andrew was making, what I was thinking was if you want that faster pace or that more like college-level experience like you alluded to, that's the choice.
Oh, okay.
And then the patterns approach is kind of the regional, with the Portland Metro STEM partnership, we're collaborating with Forest Grove, Beaverton, Portland Public to develop that patterns approach. But I think our, if Andy were here, he would probably say that we're also buying a textbook and kits to be able to do some hands-on activities with bio. So there is that textbook meets NGSS-aligned instructional practice with cross-cutting concepts and all that. So there is a little bit of a balance there. And then the AP is aligned with what the college board prescribes as the scope and sequence. So that's the same anywhere across the country.
Okay.
So I hope that clarified.
It does, and I appreciate you speaking to Andrew and connecting him.
Yeah.
I think that's important. Do we do student audits of any curriculum?
Students are involved in the piloting of the curriculum.
Okay.
We get their feedback, and then there are students on the CCAC as well.
Right. Okay. I have a long question. Thank you.
There was a second person whose volume is not pushing anymore. Did you get your question answered? Okay, great. Kim?
My question, we toured with M.D. Liberty, and that was for this adoption, correct?
Yeah, we did chemistry and biology. My memory fails me now which schools we did which. We were at Century and Liberty.
And what I recollect from that was a teacher excitement about materials and the supplemental materials. And so that, I'm very confident in supporting interest from those conversations from people who had been piloting it and seeing the supplemental materials. And I'm glad that despite budget protections, we're still able to keep moving slowly in this direction.
Yes, I appreciate that. All right. So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Yedira that the board of directors approve proposed adoption of chemistry and biology materials. If you would like to approve that motion, which Martin made and Yedira seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If not, please say no. That is great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item number six, approve 2019-20 board meeting dates. I'm ready to hear a motion.
I know that the board directors approves the board meeting dates for the 2019-20 school year.
Second. It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica. I saw you getting ready to, no? Okay, perfect. Discussion, Mark?
Val, you will send us calendar. Anybody else want to speed out this?
I will. I am for the seats.
Jackie?
I want to thank you for including the half-day group session on March 17th. I think that moved really good for her. And I'm excited to see how that pans out. So thank you for taking that into consideration.
I just want Kim to amend the date we shared with Sheen.
Yes, and she can provide me with.
Perfect. Thank you. I was looking for a comment.
So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica that the board of directors approves the board meeting dates for 2019-20 school year. If you would like to approve those dates, which Kim made the motion for and Erica seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Those meeting dates are approved. That brings us to item number seven, the board chair and vice chair elections. So we'll do first Chair and then we'll do Vice Chair. Nominations, you may have all seen the process. We do not require a second, so keep that in mind. So I will go ahead and open nominations for Chair.
I nominate Erica Lopez for Chair.
Okay. Are there, I have Erica Lopez nominated for Chair. She was nominated by Martin Graham. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, I'm going to declare the nomination is closed. Perfect. Okay. So now we will vote on Chair. So Erica Lopez has been nominated for Chair. She was nominated by Martin Graham. If you would like Erica Lopez to be the board chair for 2019-20, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Excellent. Erica Lopez is our new Chair. Congratulations. Wonderful. I will now declare nominations open for Vice Chair.
I nominate Martin Graham for Vice Chair.
Martin Graham has been nominated for Vice Chair by Yedira Martinez. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to declare nominations closed. So we are now voting on Vice Chair. Martin Graham has been nominated by Yedira to be Vice Chair. If you would like Martin Graham to be our Vice Chair for 2019-20, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, if not, please say no. All right. Martin will be our Vice Chair. Congratulations. Just a little bit of musical chairs. So Erica will take this seat and Martin will take first seat and I'll take Martin's seat. So give him just a moment and then we'll review in a second. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. I have a chair.
So our new item on the agenda is to administer the oath of office for our student representative. Actually, we're going to do our elected board of directors first. So I would like to ask Sheen and Kim to be the examples.
So I'm going to recite, and you can kind of look at where it's all written. Do it. And administer the oath of office for you. So please raise your right hand. I, Sheen, Ken.
I, Sheen, Ken.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the office as a school board member.
The duties of the office as a school board member.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God. And now I would like to invite re-elected School Board Member, Lisa Allen. Lisa, please raise your right hand.
Aye, Lisa Allen.
Aye, Lisa Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
As a school board member. As a school board member to the best of my ability.
As a school board member to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And my chances.
Thank you.
And I would like to bring up another re-elected, Adira Martinez. Right hand. Aye, Adira Martinez.
Aye, Adira Martinez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of the school board, as a school board member.
Discharge the duties of the office, as a school board member.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Sheen, you want to review your two hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
All right. Now I would like to bring up our student representatives. But first, since I'm already out here, I need a motion to appoint our student representatives.
I move that the Board of Directors appoint Andrew Goodwin, Maria Isabel Aguilar Alvarado, and Danny Atima to serve as student representatives to the Board of Directors for the 2019, 2020 school year and administer the oath of office.
Second.
That was moved by Mark Watson and seconded by Lisa Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? The motion passes that the Board of Directors appoint Andrew Goodwin, Maria Isabel Aguilar Alvarado, and Danny Atima to serve as student representatives to the Board of Directors for the 2019-20 school year and administer the oath of office. And I'm going to invite Andrew to come up first. Repeat after me if you raise your right hand.
Aye, Andrew Goodwin.
Aye, Andrew Goodwin.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties of student representatives.
And will discharge the duties of student representatives.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And now I would like to bring up Maria Isabel Aguilar Alvarado. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I'm Maria Isabel Aguilar Alvarado.
I'm Maria Isabel Aguilar Alvarado.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties of student representatives.
And will discharge the duties of student representatives.
To the Hillsborough School Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School.
School Director, Board of Directors. To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And last but certainly not least, I would like to invite Danny Atima.
Aye, Danny Atima.
Aye, Danny Atima.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties of the student representative.
And will discharge the student, the duties of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And now we're going to also determine.
I thought we were, are we doing, are we doing more musical chairs? There's not three chairs here, which makes me question that we're not doing that.
No, because there's three boards.
I know when they, oh my gosh. Okay. We had talked about switching, and then apparently we're not, but nobody told me that. So, so I'm trying. I am, I'm ready to.
I'm ready to take my advice before I retire. Please.
So I guess we're not doing musical chairs here. Okay. Again.
So it's one last time. Let me just have my night.
I don't know. Not in turn anymore.
Erica, please.
You get to stand.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is HCU and HU reports.
The microphone went missing.
I know. Okay.
So, uh, whoa. So this is, uh, as many of you already know, this is my last time that I'm going to be standing in front of you as HCU president. Um, my successor, Melody Hansen, has, is taking, taking the reins and is, um, and over the last couple of months, I've been thinking about legacy and what you leave behind because nothing lasts forever. You know, your service on the board, your service in a position of power, your service as being part of the sort of in crowd of like, sort of that HR, union superintendent team that meets and talks and deals with problems and tries to solve things. That only lasts for a couple of years. And, uh, I tried as president to do my best to, you know, promote a positive attitude. And I think what we have forged over the last five years as being union president is something really special. And I hope that the work that I have done is, is left something that future generations in the next board will be able to do. And to the outgoing board members, I really want to thank you all for the work that you've done and the legacy that you're leaving behind and the sort of, the level of expectations that you have raised for those who come after you. I know the, the work for the student representatives, that is going to be a huge change to this board and to this district, and having that voice is going to be so important. Kim, I know you and I have worked on the bond, and I've watched you fight tirelessly for all sorts of different things, and I'm really excited to see what you do next because I know you're, you know, this is, the chapter's done, but the story isn't done yet. There's still work for you to do to help our kids. And I thank to new leadership and the, and the new people on the board and those who are coming and those who came, um, before us. I just am so thankful that I'm able to have the opportunity to work in Hillsborough School District. And I'm looking really excited to go back to working with technology because everything in this district happens because someone puts effort into it. Nothing happens by accident, and nothing happens because it's natural, even though it may seem like magic to the parents and students as they get into this education. And I really look forward to moving computers around and doing the, the, I call it like the information technology summer workout schedule, moving computers around and you're lifting stuff and pushing things. And, um, I'm really excited because we have so much going on in Hillsborough. And when we get through all this work, we're going to have such, so much better learning environment that it makes me jealous of, even with all the budget cuts, even with all the larger class sizes, the opportunities that our students have in this school district are amazing, and it doesn't happen by accident. It happens because people in this room show up every month to make sure that it happens and make sure that our students get the best of the education. And I'm so thankful that I've had the opportunity to be a part of that story. So, thank you.
Jill Willing, Hillsborough Education Association President, and I want to say thank you, um, to everyone and thank you to my school students. Really appreciate, and, um, I concur with whatever everybody said in regards to how valuable you have been. And really looking forward to next year's high school students and Sheen as well. I have a card for Kim. I started here in 2010, and I remember you coming to the, the union office when you were, you know, a candidate, and you had that smile on your face that you still have. And just looking to be a little part of this, thank you for your service. And just, uh, just real quick, you know, I've been to a couple of buildings today. I was out at West Union and the kindergarteners and the teacher, they're just, I could not listen to beat. You know, everything's still up. You wouldn't even know that it's due. And went over to a fifth grade class at W. Henry, and the fifth grade teacher said, yeah, I started a countdown yesterday, five days left. And one of the boys said, wait, you mean, we don't come to school this week? And so I just want to tell you that they are still, you know, they're still in it. They're still so focused. We only have three days left, but the kids are really still working hard. Teachers are working really hard, it's important for graduation, that we just finished our ESPEC testing and DRAs, and then you're packing up because they're having some renovations in the building. And then also, you know, it's always very sweet for teachers because these kids become part of our family. And so they worry about things like making sure that they're going to have, um, you know, that summer lunch at the park and reading opportunities all summer long. And so, you know, as you just, these next three days, just remember, you know, that even though teachers are excited for summer, you know, they're also, you know, fully thinking it should be considered, we take care of them all summer long. Just wish everybody a wonderful summer, and I'll see you guys on guest in August. Thank you.
And now we will move on to our next item, which is the discussion time, and we will start with regards to the number of members.
Okay. Junior year has been the most hardest and stressful year so far, but it also has been full of great experiences, and one of those great experiences was being able to be the student representative for my school. I've learned a lot from this experience, and I would like to thank all of you for welcoming me and Jessica with open arms, all the times that I've spent in these meetings and other events that have been so great. And I just want to let you all know how grateful I am for being offered this opportunity. And I wish you all so much luck with the following school year, and I can't wait to graduate next year and have my diploma handed to me by one of you. Thank you.
I tried to make this as short as possible. Per Lisa's request, I may, I don't know. I've written a little of goodbyes these past couple of weeks, and I keep thinking each one will get easier, but no goodbye is easy. This has been and will be one of the hardest goodbyes in high school just because I don't know where to start. How do you say goodbye without policing? Thank you. Thank you to each and everyone, each and every one of you for the lessons and the memories you guys have given me. I remember back in the spring of 2018, I walked into an Esko meeting where Brooke was talking about this position, and it was the time that started this all. She saw me coming, and she told me about it. I didn't know what it was, but I agreed to it anyways. After talking it over with Casper, she encouraged me to comply. I quickly talked up my application with the help of my English teacher, Mrs. Ferris, and admitted it. At the beginning of summer, I received an email with information regarding my interview. I looked at that morning with my heart racing. I didn't know why I was so anxious, but I was. After the interview, I left my, I left the building with my head even low. I messed up. I knew it. The next month and a half seemed to drag on as I constantly refreshed my email preparing myself for the graduate actions. However, at the sound of August, the dreaded email popped into my box. My heart started to sink as I read the first couple of lines. I didn't make it, but I kept reading. Something inside of me left for joy. I had gotten the position, and though I still didn't know what it meant, I felt as if for the first time I had done something right. My entire life, I've been an extroverted kid, but I felt as if I never had a voice. Being a student representative this year has changed that. It has given me that voice I knew I had, but I didn't know how to use it. This past year, I also grew into myself, and as the years come to a close, I cannot find words to thank you all enough. I was worried for my junior. Everyone told me it was the hardest year, and all the decisions you make that will work towards your future. Thinking back to September, I don't know why I was worried. It's just been a year. At, at the first board meeting, I remember leaving my side class early to catch the bus to make sure I made it on time. Now, my teacher didn't know what I was doing. I didn't even know what I was doing. I just had to hope that he would let me leave. In the end, he did with a questioning look, but a good look to follow me as I walked out the door. When my hair was hanging on my backpack and a smile went onto my face, I got on the bus eagerly awaiting the night. In typical Jessica fashion, I got off the bus and was going to miss my time to be there. Panic washed over me, but it was a mouthful of voice of help and helping hand that reassured me, that reassured everything to be okay. My picture was taken as the board meeting started. There were so many people there. My heart was racing, and I felt like I wasn't breathing. For the first time in my life, I felt like I belonged. I didn't feel alone. I felt welcomed. The meeting went by in front of many others. I quickly began to look forward to Tuesdays when we had our meetings. As the year went on, my excitement only grew. Having staff members at school stop me in the halls to ask if that was really me and to congratulate me on being part of this school work was something I was never expecting. Having students from my school and neighbors from my neighborhood stop me and ask me if that was really me on social media or on the news was something I also never expected. I guess being on board this year taught me to expect the unexpected. Later on in the year, we went to OSBA's conference, and I couldn't even be upset about waking up early from being so filled with excitement. I woke up, checked my coffee, and got dressed. Walking in the hotel with everyone was a different experience. Being in leadership, we often go on field trips to different schools and to conferences, and this felt somewhat to that, but it was so much more at the same time. Towards the end of the day, we went to hot, we went to the hot tables, and this is when I mentioned it all alone. I felt as if I was a little kid in a candy shop who had lost my parents. There were so many options in front of me, but I didn't know which one to choose. I ended up choosing the ones that had similar names to things I was interested in, and little did I know by the time that the final table I would choose would end up changing my life even more. A couple of weeks later, I received an email from Bluechuck and OSBA asking if I wanted to do a video project with them. I've never been more confused in my life. I didn't know what this meant or what it was, but I took it, but I took a leap and ended up responding. This leap ended up being the best decision I've ever made. After long phone calls and meetings, we ended up filming five different videos that was published on Facebook just a couple of months later. These videos have opened up countless amounts of doors to me, and I can't begin to thank you guys enough for helping me get there. The memories from going out to Salem and working alongside Gordon is something I will forever cherish. From being on board this year, I was able to experience things I never would have imagined possible in my life. From people not, from people knowing who I am at state level to sitting on stage at graduations. Junior year is coming to a close, and it is because of you guys and the motivation for my teachers during my many mental breakdowns that have made this year memorable one. Junior year has been the year that changed me, and I all, owe all my thanks to you guys who made it. who made it possible. Now, as my time as student representative has come to a close, I want to say a couple more thank yous. My first one, thank you to Mark for giving me a chance and for always being there when I have written questions about everything and for overall helping me transition smoothly. Thank you for being my mentor and for everything you have done this year. Kim, thank you for helping me through this year and being a part of my journey to Salem as, and as we both say our goodbyes to the board, I want to especially thank you for spending your time with me on your final year on the board. I also want to thank you for being my role model and guiding me through the tough times. Jackie, thank you for all the rides home and everything you have done throughout this year. I don't know what I would have done without you or your encouraging words to motivate me through. Thank you for being my unofficial mentor and for all the ties and all the tricks that we must bargain. Oh, I wait, can you give me my home? Thank you to everyone who, who was on the board this year and made it grow as smoothly as it did. This year was the first year for both of us and I know everybody was skeptical, but I couldn't have pictured a better way of doing this. You guys have opened countless amounts of doors for me and given me a second family and I couldn't thank you enough for that. Samantha, you have been my partner in crying, facing so many things and me asking and going through this year. I wouldn't have wanted to go through this with anyone else, so thank you. We're going to crush see you year together and texting, we'll go to bargaining and crying for our milkshakes. Being a part of the school board this year has been an entire life-changing experience. The year has flown by and to say that this is the last time I'll be sitting out here is more than heartbreaking to me. It's an incredible honor to be one of the first student representatives and I don't think I could ever thank you guys enough. I know I've said a lot of thank yous to her in this letter, but I don't know how else to express my gratitude. This year has shown me how change can better you, how reaching out at your shelf can really pay off, and most of all, how the friendship you make will stick with you for our life. Thank you for giving me voice and teaching me all the many lessons you guys have taught me. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Susan. And now we're getting to our board of directors time.
All right, thank you. Always glad to follow a kid, that's just a word. So first of all, I want to thank you for that incredibly awkward evaluation letter that you read out loud, with sweating the entire time. So really glad that's over, but thank you for your generosity in that letter. I, I don't take the support of the board for granted at all. I appreciate and I'm humbled by very nice evaluation. And it really is thanks to the staff that you see here and to help the audience and everyone that does the incredible work that they do in the schools. I'm just privileged to receive that evaluation and love this work and look forward to many more years to come. To Lisa, thank you for serving as board chair. You and your pink gavel were incredibly efficient and Erica's got some big shoes to fill. She's got a purple gavel and it's ready to go, but thank you for your two years of service in this position. You have guided us incredibly well. I, I always joke when, when someone becomes the board chair, they take their place in the favorites list on my phone and they get a lot of calls, so really looking forward to that. But thank you for all you've done. To our new students who are joining the board, really excited to have you. Welcome, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. For our board members who were re-elected, congratulations. That's what Lisa and Yavira and Sheen, welcome to you. We're excited to have you as part of our board and look forward to working with you as well. And finally, to our last, last couple, Devin, thanks for your partnership over the last several years. We have spent a lot of quality time talking. I think we'll be again tomorrow one last time. So looking forward to that and I always appreciate your willingness to problem solve and to look outside of the box for answers, so really appreciate that. Jessica and Samantha, it's been a pleasure. Thanks for serving as our first board rep. We look forward to seeing great things from you. And my final thank you, Kim, for those last eight years. I, I have called Kim a number of times myself. It's not just the board members that call her for advice and I will continue to call, so thank you for, appreciate it.
And now we're getting to our board of directors time and we start with Jackie.
I'll start with Jackie. I wanted to, if I can, to ask Travis a question. When does the social health curriculum start?
The next year where we start our parents law, the compliance of parents law started. The year ahead of this year, where we hired Kristen Lawford to be a parent board leader who delivers those lessons at the high school level and provides guidance for us. We've trained our SROs in that, start curriculum. So they're, it's complicated, but this year and the next year, we'll start with a K-12 plan.
Okay, and is that the curriculum that's on the website, on the HSD website?
Yeah, it's not fully updated on the website yet. We're still putting together resources over the summer, like specific lesson plans.
Okay. Okay, I would just encourage us, since we didn't have time to post additional family open houses regarding the curriculum. I know you have other ideas and plans as well.
We're talking about a number of different formats.
Okay.
Certainly, well, I can update the board during, so board updates.
Okay.
There's a format that we ran when we did the heterogeneous, homogeneous group rate conversation where we had panel, we had questions, we interviewed by experts, rather than just open sort of like, public Q and A, which I felt like was more effective.
Okay.
So we can run a number of engagement activities between now and...
Absolutely, I would strongly encourage you to do that. Graduations, favorite time of year? Loved doing the HOA's graduation and seeing their senior projects, that big Rubik's Cube. I don't know if you saw it, but it was huge. It was awesome. Highlight though, I have to say, is handling my son's circle. I mean, there's nothing that, that needs that, to be honest. So, um, thank you for that opportunity. Yeah, it's gonna be a summer break now. So, thank you.
Yay.
Happy birthday. This is so weird, first, so it was very weird.
Congratulations to Erica and Martin on being elected as chair and vice chair. I think you guys will be a stellar duo and so excited to see you guys do all that work and watch you do it, not how to do it. So that's been great. And congratulations Devin on your years of service and also being to be able to even open up the tire and that goal of extra work, I feel, yeah? And I hope that you get to have a little more time to focus on yourself and enjoy that, that actual freedom, just thank you for all the time you spent with us. And I am also really excited about welcoming our new student representatives next year. Thank you for coming and doing your own office and we're really excited to have you next year, opportunity to work with you. I didn't get to be the mentor or the buddy of either of you, Jessica unfortunately, but I do get to this time, I think, so I'm really happy, let me, I'm really excited about that. And I'm all, I'm just joking, of course, really, I'm, it's just, I joke a lot, you will believe me. And Sheen, I'm very excited to welcome you to our, our cast of characters that are doing a fantastic job pulling in shoes. And I can't wait for you to be here with us, so thank you also for coming here tonight and for your attendance again. And then finally, thank you, Yantika, I've already said all that, I'm not gonna say a lot much, I'm just, I was joking when we had our last leadership planning meeting with Erica and I can, I was saying, "Mr. Yara," but really, this is the end of Yara, so it's not even in a joking way. You have just made such a huge impact on our district and our community and, and it's, it's pretty incredible when we think of all the things that happened because of your leadership and so I really do appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Because I forgot, I'm so sorry. I know, I'm gonna take it back, okay? Welcome, congratulations. I'm so sorry, I didn't say that earlier. I got lost in the moment. Congratulations, I so look forward to working with you and you three, can't wait to interview, so welcome. You two, I'll talk to a recorder in my hall. Thank you, Kim. Congratulations to Yara and congratulations to Lisa. Okay, I'm done. I'm just done.
I didn't know how to go left, no, I don't know, but it's all right. Two facilities and everybody who makes it seem so seamless over the graduations. I love the stadium, I don't care if the rain sprinkles. It, I just, it has such a fun atmosphere to it. I love how everybody ends it. I love the field, I love that people can cheer and I just love every piece of it. And your team is always so warm and true us, board members, because we enter so kindly. They're just awesome and just kudos, because that's a lot of work and people just don't realize how much worth graduation is. So kudos. Devin, also, I did realize this was your last meeting and, yeah, we've done a lot of work and I got a feeling that we would both sign up for something else and keep on working. That's just sort of in our DNA. Lisa, you did a great job as chair and you handled it so well and here's the part you're not gonna like, your phone's going to stop ringing. But you don't talk to your brain kind of every day, it's very strange and you will have a little bit of a draw because you get so used to that pattern of communication and then it just stops calling, it's like that way. It's really weird. Anyway, I already said it a lot earlier this evening, but just thank you to everybody. This is, leaving here is really incredibly bittersweet and I look forward to staying connected to this school district and the variety of other ways.
Yeah, this time of transition is kind of amazing and I know that HSF folks are very excited to have you on the board, so Kim will definitely still be involved in the school district in many ways. I think then it's some anniversary that means, obviously, I mean, you guys are gonna... Thank you to Samantha and Jessica, just amazing year, first year. Looking forward to working with our new representatives. Sheen, welcome aboard. Looking forward to, we've heard these stories of Lisa unleashed, that as a chair, you always go last and you're generally supposed to be reserved in your comments and we've heard stories that Lisa doesn't normally behave that way. I think we're looking forward to seeing that, you know? Graduations are amazing. You remember these days, yeah? Graduation...
Which one?
I, I agree with Jackie, the top of the highlight is handing my son his diploma and all of his friends their diplomas, so that was pretty amazing. And yeah, the stadium is the way to go.
Yeah.
It's, I know we haven't had like a tragic weather event yet, but even when we do, it's gonna still be the way to go, so I just don't listen. Well, happy summer.
Thank you Samantha and Jessica for the, and here's our two reps. Devin, thank you for being great liaison, really appreciate it. And local students and Sheen, we look forward to having you. Congratulations, Martin and Erica. And although I didn't get to attend any of this year's high school graduations, y'all need to get to a pre-school graduation. Because if you haven't been there, I'm telling you, they have eniadas, they have musical chairs, stage TV and hot lug and they sing Baby Shark, which was really... It was a ton of fun. And the other reason was that I was presenting about the work that I do on this board and the board advisory to a group that we are encouraging within the organization and we're going to become Involved City Group. So that was really rewarding to get people interested in serving their community in different ways. And I will definitely let that group know about the openings on our budget committee and curriculum committee, so, yeah.
I remember, but I forgot. Yes, thank you Devin.
Got it. Got it. We're waiting a minute early.
What Jackie did, so...
That's what I'm saying.
And thank you, Hallie. So I had a chance to get to know Hallie at least a little bit in the collective bargaining sessions we had that ended with a successful contract, so great to see you taking leadership position and welcome aboard, thanks.
So great, board members begin with, with great candidates and, and they usually come from people who are engaged in the community in a number of ways. We, we all come to this from a number of backgrounds and I am, it's with great joy and humility that I appreciate the endorsement of my colleagues on the board that serves your, your vice chair and I really, really, really look forward to working and supporting Erica as madam chair. Love that phrase, madam chair. Yes. And I want to say thank you, Lisa, for being a great chair. We accomplished a tremendous amount in the two years of your leadership and going back, you know, you had coffee with me, I don't know if you regret it, but you had coffee with me in December. You convinced me to run and I'm grateful to you, Lisa, and a lot of people in this room really got me going. And, and I would like to thank Devin for serving. I'd like to thank everybody in this room who served in a variety of capacities. This room is full of people who have self-selected to be engaged and called, "You're here tonight." That speaks volumes about your caring and being involved. And it's, it's an honor to serve on a board that increasingly looks like the community that we serve and I couldn't be more pleased to be here with my colleagues.
All right, now it's my turn. This is what it feels like to go last. Yeah. Well, everything that's been said by my previous board members, we were all very, it's the highlight of our year to go to graduations. It's the most fun time that we, you know, that's kind of, we don't get paid to do any of the service, but we feel like that's what we, that's what we get at the end, so I'm very appreciative that we did participate like that. Our student board representatives, who's their last, you know, year here, but we are very thankful that you guys were our, our first student representatives and that this is something that this board really wanted to happen and we made it happen. So that speaks to the volume of power and influence and just great decision makers that we have to make sure that we put our students first. I also want to welcome our new student board representatives that are out in the audience and afterwards, if you could please come see me and one more thing under. Sheen, I'm super excited to have you on our board, can't wait for you to be here. And I just also wanted to say thank you to Kim for all your service that you've done to our board and just as much as Mike, you know, we're talking about Mike following you and me following you and getting more advice. And thank you for Lisa, serving this role and being vice chair, giving you a good opportunity to start learning responsibilities and just the role understanding. I will be a little harsh for her next time with the time, I mean, just getting paid for it. And keeping us on time. Thank you so much for your leadership and, and sure, all of us, we all have different strengths and that's really what I'm going to draw on each of our board members. We are a collaborative team, we work really well together and we always put our students first. So thank you so much, it's so made my job a lot this year. And with that, we are adjourned.